I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 25th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. Tonight, prayer will be given by Alderman John Ray Kinsey.
Good afternoon. Ms. Sampson, would you please come to the podium and lead us in prayer, please?
Praise the Lord. Father, we worship Him in Jesus, and only by His name, Father. Father, ask that You make me worthy, have My Father, call upon Your holy and righteous name. And, Father, thank You, have My Father, for when it comes up this morning and the time and that to eternity. And, Father, we're coming before You right now in the name of Jesus, begging for forgiveness for all our sins. And, Father, it's a special blessing for the country, the city, and the nation, have My Father. All our tortures right now from the crown of our heads to so much of it, have My Father. And, Father, I realize, have My Father, there is love on board, have My Father. And, Father, there is love and shelter, have My Father. Oh, God, remember those, have My Father, that can't understand, that stick the shell in, have My Father, that are concerned, and the kids, have My Father, that touch them in a special way. And, Father, with the cravelling days are done, can't call Your name anymore, have My Father. There's a resting place in Your kingdom. And, Father, so let this go, amen. Praise the Lord.
We've met him, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Ethel. Would you, gentlemen, pledge leaps to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Matt Clark, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Dass.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, our first item of business tonight is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries. Let's go to item number five, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is a public hearing and consideration of the board to adopt an ordinance for overlay language for the redevelopment area. Establishing an overlay district for the greater five points redevelopment area will provide new standards to guide the physical development of the area as detailed in the redevelopment commission's plan that was adopted by this board on the 11th of February 2020. There's a new section that's going to be added to our code, and at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ruggeri to discuss those additions and, obviously, the overlay language that's going to be found within this new redevelopment code that we're adding to the code ordinances of the city.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. As Colleen pulls up the PowerPoint, the item for you, as the city manager stated, was to create an overlay district to govern the physical development of the redevelopment area. This overlay, thank you, Colleen, is one of the recommendations of the redevelopment plan that we approved in February as a way to establish some physical guidelines for development within the redevelopment area. So, we'll have a new section in our overlay section of the code, 15487. We're all well familiar with the area that we're talking about, the redevelopment area. It's about 1,900 parcels, 1,899, 474 acres of property. Of the 1,899 parcels, only 1,006 are developed, roughly a 47% vacancy rate in the area. So, as we said earlier, this is the way that we're going to establish some of the physical design standards for the redevelopment of the districts. The first one deals with density and dimension requirements. And, for all the R6 zoning designations within the redevelopment area, approximately 65% of the entire redevelopment area is zoned R6. So, this is a change to the minimum lot sizes for R6 within the redevelopment area. Right now, that minimum lot size per single-family detax would be 6,000 square feet. The language before you reduces that standard to 1,500 square feet with a minimum lot width of 25 feet, and it also establishes the setback requirements. The idea here, from the commission, was to establish a maximum flexibility for the redevelopment of land in the redevelopment area. Finding value and creating value for redevelopment is very difficult. In order to do so, it's going to take some units to put it in there. This language provides a very low standard, I guess. It's not a maximum, which people get confused with a lot. It's not a maximum 1,500 square foot. This is the absolute lowest you can go. It doesn't require people to be 1,500. It allows them to be 1,500 if they can build it this way. But, the idea is to incentivize developers, anyone wanting to build in the community, to accumulate lots and maybe put together a series of lots, maybe, you know, 2,500 square feet lots or 2,000 square foot lots. It really does provide a maximum flexibility, allows for innovation, some ingenuity, and some new ideas to be put on the ground in the redevelopment area, which is a challenge to redevelop as it is right now with the existing zoning standards. There's a prohibition on manufactured homes within the redevelopment area as it exists today. Half of the area has a prohibition on manufactured homes. That area is the sub-Valley neighborhood, south of Broad Street, currently has a restriction. So, this restriction would include everything north of Broad Street. Does not include modular homes. As we had the discussion last meeting on non-conforming situations investing, those same rules will apply to existing mobile homes, manufactured homes in the area. Just for clarification, a modular home, though oftentimes these days looks exactly like a manufactured home, are built to a different standard. This prohibition only extends to HUD-regulated homes, not homes that are regulated by the North Carolina Building Code, which would be allowed anywhere within the redevelopment area as well as the rest of the city. To go along with smaller lot sizes, this is a reduction of the parking standard as it stands today. All single-family developments are required to provide two off-street parking spaces. This language here only requires one off-street parking space for both residential detax and residential attached-type developments. Attached would be a townhome-looking type of development or patio home or something like that. And, this comes from, obviously, there's not a lot of space if you get your lots down too low. But, also, during the CNI planning effort, it was discovered that 50% of the property owners, excuse me, within the redevelopment area had access to one or fewer cars. So, there's really not a lot of cars. There's no reason to park them if they're not there. Again, provides maximum flexibility for redevelopment and also does not preclude anybody from providing two off-street parking spaces if they so choose. And, that is the extent of what the overlay language would change in the redevelopment area. There will take any questions, but go on with the public. Thank you.
Laura, any questions?
Yes, I do.
Hi.
Mayor, I have a question. So, Jeff, let me have a great understanding of what you just stated so that the public can understand as well. So, individual families of whomever that lives within this overlay, this greater five points overlay plan, if they currently have a single-wide mobile home or a modular home, they will not be affected by this new change?
They will be affected only to the fact that they wish to change it, then they wouldn't be allowed to do so. But, that existing structure can stay there.
Okay. No new structures can come in, mobile homes can come in?
Correct.
Okay. Not unless... Well, that wouldn't even include HUD approvals as well, correct?
HUD approval, correct, yes. So, that is what the prohibition extends to, is the HUD-approved mobile homes.
All right. I just wanted to... Thank you very much.
To add to, the Alderman asked you, if you want to make an addition to a manufactured home, would you be allowed to add on to one?
You can increase our non-conformity section. It does not allow you to increase the non-conformity. So, the fact that the mobile home is on the lot says that it is allowed non-conforming use, but you wouldn't be able to increase it. So, you wouldn't be able to put an addition on to it.
Okay. And, you are saying that in R6, that the minimum lot size is 1,500 feet?
That's... Yes, sir.
That's the minimum.
So, would the board of adjustment...
Well, just in the overlay.
Yes, sir. Would the board of adjustment allow variance? I mean, obviously, you can't speak for the board of adjustment, but if somebody had a 1,495 square foot lot, is there the possibility that if somebody wanted to improve that lot, that they could get a variance from the board of adjustment?
An existing lot that was less than 1,500 square feet would be allowed to build on, but you wouldn't be able to create one less than 1,500?
Well...
Yeah, I don't think there are any, but I'm just saying...
You could create one, but if you have an existing lot...
The board of adjustments doesn't have within its purview to allow for that type of variance, to create the issue, if that makes sense.
Well...
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
So, if somebody had, you know, a 6,000-square-foot lot, they could carve off 1,500 or 2,000 square feet and have two lots, two smaller lots. They could do that.
Absolutely.
That would be allowed under this.
You could make four.
So, again, a family member could live there.
Correct.
Something of that nature, and that would allow it to...
But, you wouldn't be able to create a 1,400-square-foot lot and a 1,600-square-foot lot. You'd have to create two 1,500s.
Correct.
And, there's no relief under the board of adjustments to allow that to happen.
But, currently, existing homes that are in there are on 6,000-square-foot lots, based on the ones that may have come in later on.
Sure.
Not all are in there. I understand that.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that, because the people understand, there's been some concern over the number 1,500, that all lots were going to be these tiny little lots. And, it just allows the flexibility for people that, you know, may have a larger lot to allow a grandparent or a parent to live there or to maybe divide it and sell it off so someone else could build on it. And, I think it gives us some good options. The other thing I want to know, is there flexibility in this plan? And, when I say flexibility, at any point as we go on in the next years, that we find that 1,500 is not the number or it needs to be something else, this would just have to come back before the board to be reviewed.
Same process we're going through today.
So, this isn't like in concrete for the rest of our lives.
Correct.
Because things happen, and I want to make sure there's some flexibility in the plan if needed.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the only question with that, you know, we talked about tiny houses somewhere...
Correct.
I mean, the redevelopment commission might see fit that there's somewhere that would be applicable. So, obviously, you might, with a tiny house, that might be a redundant surplus amount of property. So, have you thought or, in working with the redevelopment commission, have you looked into this ordinance and how it would apply with tiny homes?
Well, it depends on what we call a tiny home, right? So, there's the tiny home that you see on the TV where people bring in a trailer and build a home on it, 200 square feet, 300 square foot structure that they live in, and they call that a tiny home. There's also small houses, which are totally different. If you can build a small 500, that gives you a 525-foot building footprint, if you can put a building in there, it's a small house. Tiny homes are a different deal. We probably, we treat them, if a tiny home, as in movable and trailers and all that stuff, that's something we haven't looked at yet, we haven't addressed. That would have to be a dedicated area, it's like, oops, excuse me, tiny home park or something like that. You know, we haven't seen any demand for that yet, but obviously, if it were to come in, the redevelopment commission can easily take action to accumulate lots, to make that happen, to incentivize that type of development. It's a good group, very proactive group, and willing to address any of these issues as they come. And, we're very flexible, as you can see in the standards that we're providing here today, to work with anybody who wants to come in and redevelop in this area. So, to answer your question, it's not something we've looked into specifically. Always, it's always been a topic of conversation when we talk about smaller lots and tiny homes. But, I think we just have to take one step at a time, and if we can start building smaller homes that allow people to enter the market at a lower price point, that's a win, and that's what the redevelopment commission is trying to accomplish with their first steps.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So, now, Jeff, as well, I noticed the requirements for one off-street parking.
Correct.
Now, for those residents that are now currently living over there, do not have that parking available within their yards, because some of those lots over there are really close together. That's not going to affect them?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to see if anybody else is... At this time, is that the end of your presentation, sir? We have a public hearing. I'm all open to public hearing. Anybody that would like to come forward and ask any questions, make any comments concerning the assignment, you're free to do that at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, to close the public hearing, is there a discussion? Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. I just wanted to thank the redevelopment commission. I see commission members out there, Morgan and Mosley, and I just want to thank you and the rest of the commission for the work. I mean, this is weeks of conversation. This just wasn't, it was weeks of conversation, putting out there, listening to public. So, I do want to thank the commission members for the work that they're doing on this behalf. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance for overlay language for the redevelopment area.
Have motion and a second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Dass.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is submission of the tax collector's annual statement or settlement for tax year 2019. North County General Statute 105-333 requires tax collector to furnish to the board an annual settlement of property taxes. Mr. Ron Antry, the Craven County Tax Administrator, has provided the statement revealing the total 2019 amended tax levy was $14,167,346.17 as of June 30, 2020. $14,24,086.67 of this has been collected. That represents 98.99% collection rate, which is really good. The amount delinquent as of that date was $143,259.50. In addition, the 2019 amended tax levy for the municipal service district was $188,089.09 as of June 30, 2020. $187,833.64 of this has been collected, which equates to a collection rate of 99.86%. The amount remaining delinquent as of the 30th of June was $255.45. The board is asked to accept the settlement reports as stated by Mr. Antry, our tax collector.
What action do you want on that?
For the board to accept the settlement reports as stated from Mr. Antry, our Craven County tax collector.
Fagin.
Motion and second, is there a discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would request from Ms. Hogan if she could provide a list of the delinquent taxpayers to the board. That would be really helpful. Okay, thank you.
We do have that. I anticipated that. We have a list of the, I don't know how many are on the list, but we have a list of those, and we will distribute that to the board tomorrow morning or tonight, whichever one she can get to fastest.
Is that a public document? Is that a public document?
Uh, yes.
So, anybody could access that? Is it something that, you know, would be in a site where the public can get to it? They would just go to where, Finance, or where would they go on our website to find that?
I mean, unless the board wishes for us to publish it, we'll publish it, but...
Well, I'm just wondering where somebody would go to find that information. Just asking.
County tax collector.
County tax collector? Okay. I was just curious.
Next question I have, Mark, of Ms. Hogan. What is the time period? I know you know county collects the taxes, and county is one that also starts any foreclosure procedures, but what action is going to... What's the next step with the county now, time-period-wise, for its collection of these delinquent taxes?
Yeah, I'd have to follow up with Mr. Antry with regards to what their next steps are, but ultimately, you know, I've seen unpaid taxes for property go for several years before action is actually taken either by the county or the city or both.
Yeah. Because I know Craven County had tightened down on foreclosures a lot, so I was just wondering what the next process was going to be for them. And, I'm assuming that because of the difference in the collection rate, a lot of it has to do with COVID-19 and also Hurricane Florence and all of that.
Well, the collection rate is actually pretty high, considering, but, yes, I would imagine that some of the unpaid may be related to folks who were probably late to begin with and thus far are probably still late, but...
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse. The adopted budget for FY 2021 included the purchase of vehicle and equipment capital items pursuant to the IRS regulations. It's necessary for us to adopt a declaration of official intent to reimburse prior to incurring the expenses for those purchases. Doing so allows the city to pay itself back for items paid for prior to obtaining financing. So, essentially, what we're saying here is it is our intent to go out and obtain financing for the purchase of capital vehicles, equipment, things like that, and that we do plan on taking out debt for that to pay over a period of time. Not all of them we made, it just depends on, you know, the best interest, but for the most part, most of these items that we're planning on doing, we will take that out for it.
Board have questions?
Mark, just a question.
Sure.
Have we done this for those two fire trucks that we authorized, or where are we with that process?
Mayor, do you want to... I'm pretty sure that we... Mayor, you had to look that up. So, let me get her to give you the detail.
We've been waiting for the finalization of the 2019 audit, and you guys came in and signed that. Once that comes back from the LGC, we need permission from the LGC to do some of those larger numbers. So, that'll be going probably in the next three weeks. We'll be doing some of those large ones, but it will include that. We will be reimbursing ourselves our last-year stuff as well.
Okay. Mark, thank you.
I hope they approve it, because they're going to be here in a couple of weeks. Any other questions on item seven?
No. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse.
Second. Any other discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Dass.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. As you recall, this came before you at our last meeting. The board tabled it so that we could bring it back to give you a little bit more detail of the schedule that was provided previously amended on June 9, 2020 to reflect the fees that were to be effective July 1, 2020. The amendment that we had inadvertently admitted changes to be implemented in Section 11 of the electric utilities. These changes have been reviewed and confirmed by staff. So, I'm going to ask Mayor to come up and just explain those real quick on the schedule of fees, since there were some questions previously regarding that.
So, yeah, and I apologize for what happened at last meeting. We were not looking at the same document you were, but I think we've all got the same page in our hands now. So, essentially, what the Director of Public Utilities is asking is that we eliminate the fee for turning on water that's been disconnected if we're going out to turn it on during the weekday during work hours. So, there was a fee of $25 for that, and now we're recommending that there be no charge for that. That was the first one we got to last week. There's two other fees that we charge for reconnecting utilities that have been turned off. We have a, we used to charge $75 if we went out from 7:30 to 11:00 p.m. on a weekday. We're now recommending that that be $75, but it be from 5:00 to 11:00. So, we've just changed the time on that one, not the fee. And, the third one that he's recommending in this section is after 11:00 on weekends, we used to charge $150 to go out, like in the middle of the night on weekend, and we're recommending that we don't offer that at all, that we're just going to not do that. But, instead, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on weekends, we will reconnect the, we will reconnect the water. But, if you're calling us at 11:59 Saturday night to come, we might wait till 8:00 the next morning before we actually roll a truck out there to do that. So, those are the changes for that. I think what we've done here is we've taken them out of the top three lines and just put the correct, the correct recommended changes underneath. That's how we've situated this particular change on the red line version. Also, we had some set fees for when we were burying my electric lines, pardon me? Underground, right, underground lines, sorry. I thought it was underground electric. I guess we don't really have any above-line water. So, we had set fees for that, and they really didn't always actually cover our charges. So, what we're trying to do at this point was, in order to cover our costs, we're going to start charging time and material for those types of activities. Instead of just a set fee, we're actually going to calculate what it cost us, and then that's what we're going to charge. So, that's what that second set of numbers mean. Is there any questions about this?
Mayor, if there's any question, I'd like to make a motion. Will we adopt ordinance amending the schedule of fees and changes?
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Dass.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is a resolution approving a lease agreement with Craven Community College for 128 Rim Street. This lease agreement with Craven Community College is for the city-owned property at 128 Rim Street. The college intends to utilize the facility as an expansion of the Volt Workforce Training Center to house a police simulator for law enforcement training. This lease period is for 10 years and calls for a one-time payment of $50,000 from the college at the time of execution and $1 per year thereafter. As a condition of the lease, the city agrees to make upgrades to the existing facility as outlined in Exhibit B of the lease agreement that you have in your packet. As previously discussed, the cost of the simulator project is anticipated to be $250,000. We've received a $50,000 grant from Harold H. Bates Foundation, and also $50,000 will be received from the college. I believe that's actually from the Community College Foundation that they will be paying. So, we have $100,000 right now that's towards the lion's share, I guess, of that $250,000. The board will have to consider funding the remaining amount of $150,000 for the completion of the project. It is anticipated that we're going to do most of that work in-house with Matt's staff. Some of it will be contracted out that they can't do, but the majority of it will be in-house. Just for purposes of understanding where that is at, if you were at Rim Street and you were looking at the garage, the old garage facility, it is the first building there on the left that you see that was enclosed in the fenced area. It's the old Leith and Lamb building, if anybody had been around for that period of time, when it was the old Leith and Lamb building. But, that's the building that would be utilized for the police simulator, and it kind of ties in with the Volt Center function of a continuing-ed workforce development training facility. And, I think anybody in this meeting at this point would agree that professional training and standards for police are of utmost importance, if not today, more so than any other time in our history. So, I'm happy to take any kind of questions, and I know Chief's back there, and he's happy to answer any questions, because we've worked on this for some time.
I do have a question for you, Mark.
I do have a question for you, Mark. Their, their proposed, this proposed lease, they're paying us $50,000 at the execution of the lease. Why is that not going towards the bottom line and we just put 100 in? Because that would be 50 from the lease, 50 from the bait, and 50 from the Community College Foundation.
The, the, the Community College Foundation is giving that to the community college to pay for the lease.
Okay, that I didn't understand, so that's not separate.
It's $100,000 of money, grant money, that's it, not 150.
Okay, well, I knew that, but I was, I was wondering, when it said about the 50, it didn't say that the college, I mean, the foundation would be paying that.
The foundation is giving that to the college to give to the workforce of this project.
Just wanted to clarify that.
So, so Mark, with the 100, additional 150,000 that you requested here, you think it's going to take all this, since this is going to be actually done by in-house staff?
We have a budget, a budgeted amount of $250,000. It is our hopes that we can do it for less. We don't anticipate it being more, but the $250,000 is what we anticipate as a budgetary number for the anticipated capital cost, and that's going to be a pretty significant interior outfit that we're going to have to do. Some things can probably be value engineered, but I think that's a pretty good number. I'm hoping that we'll probably be more in the 220-ish range when, when it all is said and done.
Are there any additional grants that we potentially could, I know that it's hard to get brick and mortar grants, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're going after every grant that we hear of or try to, we, I think Margaret sent me an update today, we're about $1.6 million of grants received at this point out of about $4.5 million that we've applied for. We continue to apply for them every time we get a chance. And just, just so you know, the community colleges skin in the game, they are actually paying for, through their funds, the actual simulator, and will continue to pay for that, that maintenance fee on a continual basis and the utilization of it so that the police can continue to train. And then the, the other portion will be some commitment by the county for funds at that to, to the Community College for operation of the facility.
I'm glad, I'm glad you inserted that, Mark.
Is there any other questions or items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with Craven Community College for 128 Rim Street for a very worthy project.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2021. This budget ordinance amendment will transfer $150,000 from contingency to the grant fund for costs related to the preparation of the item you just approved. It also recognizes 50,000 in grant funds from the Harold Bates Foundation, 50,000 from the lease agreement with Craven Community College, and a general fund transfer in amount of $150,000. There's a memo that's included, it explains that, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, I would make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for FY 2021. Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is resolution approving a mutual aid agreement for 9/11, 911 Communications, however you want to say it, and dispatch backup PSAPs with Craven County. There is a revised item in front of you here for item number 11. The county agreed to remove the five-year termination and let the memorandum of understanding automatically renew each year unless canceled by one of the parties, so this is in front of you, it's been highlighted up in bold about what the change is, it's reflective of that. Essentially, this, all of our PSAPs that we have here in the county and across the state require by general statute a backup plan, and that backup emergency plan on file for the 911 board from July 1, 2016 are a risk loss of our, our funding for it. So as a result, the city entered into a mutual aid agreement in 2015 with the county so that they're our backup and subsequently we are their backup in case something were to happen with those PSAPs. So this agreement was for five years originally. It has recently expired, and as I said, there's a memo or a slip sheet that's been provided to you. Instead of it being another five-year renewal, it's just going to be in perpetuity until one of the parties cancels. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, if there's any questions, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving a mutual aid agreement for 911 Communications and dispatch backup PSAPs with Craven County.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is a resolution approving a grant from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. The New Bern Police Department have been filling the role of law enforcement county coordinator since 2012 and has been offered the position of law enforcement liaison for the region. In part, the liaison would coordinate and organize highway safety activities and work with participating agencies in the region to coordinate safety-related traffic events. The position would also host quarterly meetings, work closely with the Governor's Highway Safety Program to determine what equipment is made available to agencies in the state and assist the Governor's Highway Safety Program with events such as conferences, campaign kickoffs, and state fair. The position comes with a $24,995 grant, which requires no match. The grant will cover all expenses for travel, training, and equipment for the position, and currently, like I said, we've already been doing this for the county for some time since 2012, actually, and so this actually, now we will be the regional coordinator for this, and it comes with some funds from the State Governor's Highway Safety Program. So wanted to get the board's approval for that.
Will this be an annual thing, or, I mean?
As long as, I think, as long as we are the liaison, we should be getting those funds, is that correct, Chief?
Correct.
He's shaking his hand, yes.
So it's, it's not something we'll take on for one year, we get paid for and then have to pay for ensuing years? Correct, okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution approving the grant for the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is resolution approving an engineering amendment number three for the Township 7 Sewer Improvements Phase 3 project. This project addresses sewer capacity needs south of the Trent River. One of the major components of this project will be relocation of the sewer pump station number 10 from the Bank of Lawson Creek to 201 Eden Street. So for anybody that, that wants to know what pump station that is, if we were looking at the Housing Authority's administrative offices, there's a pump station to the left. I think we did a ribbon cutting some time ago for that little walk that we did, the extension that goes behind, behind there, that's the pump station we're talking about. Since the new site is in a historical district, the Office of State Archaeology determined that in-depth archaeology work would need to be performed to mitigate any potential adverse impacts of the site. This additional work will increase the project's engineering costs. Rivers and Associates has proposed a lump sum price of $53,450 for completion of the additional work. The existing engineering agreement will need to be amended to reflect this increase. There's a memo that's included in your packet. And by the way, we did ask the state to determine if Trium Palace had performed this before, and they said that they had not. So this is something that we're going to have to do because of the depth we're going with that new pump station. Happy to answer any questions, and I think Jordan's back there, he can answer questions as well.
The only question I have, I talked pretty much at length with Jordan about this, is I know at one time there was discussion, probably 12, 15 years ago, about a tandem line coming back to New Bern. Obviously, that, that area town is, is an area with a lot of housing starts. You know, I just asked if consideration could be put into this, this new improvement for future expansion purposes as far as any future additional lines that might come in this program. I assume it's going to come in right into this station, so that's been planned for, I'm sure. And the only other concern I had was the resiliency factor of any new improvements in that area, as high as that water table is, and I think Mr. Jordan covered that pretty good. And that's probably right much of why you want to do this anyway, is resiliency.
The resilience is one of the main reasons, because this was one of the projects that was funded through the Golden Lee Foundation for us to be able to move this up out of, and off of the Lawson Creek banks, basically.
And, and just tell me real quickly about the financing end of it, the funding end of it, the Golden Lee.
Jordan, you want to come up and talk about the capital expense?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Currently, the project is just in the engineering design and permitting phase. All of the funding expended to date has been paid out of just cash reserves within the sewer fund. We do have a $500,000 grant from the Golden Lee Foundation that will handle the, essentially cover the cost of the new pump station relocation and demolition of the old pump station to kind of clear off that spot on the Bank of Lawson Creek, which is also a Kama access, water access location. So it will make that a more attractive, more usable spot for folks to launch kayaks or have access to the river.
Thank you, thank you. Board have any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving engineering amendment number three for the Township 7 Sewer Improvements Phase 3 project.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a resolution approving a utility preliminary engineering agreement with NC DOT for the area of US 70 Neuse River Bridge. NC DOT has requested the city relocate its overhead and underground electric utilities to facilitate highway construction in the area of US 70 James City and near the Neuse River Bridge. The preliminary engineering costs are estimated at $419,220. The agreement recognizes and establishes that estimate and the terms for reimbursement from NC DOT. The balance of the reimbursable engineering and construction expenses will be forthcoming as a separate agreement. There's a memo that's been included by Mr. Bichard, our Director of Public Utilities, and he's here tonight answering questions in detail as you may have.
The only question I have, if the board has any discussion on this, is the reimbursement end of it. I know that in reading the Highway 70 or Interstate 42, that they can ask us to relocate our, our infrastructure, and it's interesting, the reimbursement end of it, just ask the staff keepers, post it on what is and what isn't, because it's very confusing to me what, what we're going to get reimbursed on and what we're not going to.
Shouldn't it be that full amount, that 419? Is that what the information states? No, not necessarily?
Well, I mean, there's other things, water, sewer, electric, and everything else is what I'm saying.
It definitely is different between the utilities, but I think this is specific to, I think Charlie's electrical engineering overhead and underground work, so I'll let him talk about that first.
Correct, this is specific to electric utilities. They are fully reimbursable because they exist within, they were in the states right away before the state claimed that right away, so they're asking us to move from a location that we previously existed. So we, we'll be reimbursed for those. This part of the process is coming up with the engineering estimate as well as the total project construction estimate, and that will be forthcoming. I'll be back before you with that total estimate, so you can see what those numbers look like and the process to get reimbursed for those. The fiber in this area is not reimbursable, so that's a whole nother matter that I'm working on and estimating those costs at this time.
Like I say, I'm very, I'm very confused on what we're going to get reimbursed on, what we're not, as far as the water, sewer, fiber, and electric.
Electric is 100%.
On this project.
On this project. Water and sewer, and it varies from project to project and from easement to easement, but you can assume, pretty much assume that in the Highway 70 project, Neuse River Bridge project, if it's electric, which is probably reimbursable, if it's water, sewer, fiber, you're probably going to have some cost share, if not a majority of the line share of the cost to relocate those, because the utilities were put in that right of way after DOT acquired the right of way. Difference is, is the electric utilities oftentimes are there before and they just kind of get swallowed up in the, in the right of way.
With prior rates. Would the relocation, would it be underground or overhead?
Most of it's going to be overhead.
It's going to be overhead?
Yes, sir. We haven't finished that design, but it's looking like it'll be overhead.
Well, you're the man. You engineer those things, I don't know, I, I didn't know if it would be underground, not from the aesthetic standpoint, but from resiliency here again.
We've looked at that, we're continuing to challenge ourselves on that idea, but there's so many places that we would have to come back up, and when you're coming from underground and crossing other areas, you'd be up and down and up and down all the time, it's, it's just not looking like that's going to be a good solution.
Okay, so board have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, there's no other questions. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the utility preliminary engineering agreement with NC DOT for the area of US 70 and Neuse River Bridge.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15 is resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Neuse Boulevard, and Roundabout. NC DOT has requested the city relocate overhead and underground electric utilities for the purpose of constructing a roundabout at Neuse Boulevard and Dr. MLK Jr. Boulevard. The cost of such relocation is estimated at $225,760. The agreement establishes the estimate and the terms for reimbursement from NC DOT. Like the last one, Charlie's provided a memo, we're happy to answer any questions.
When is that construction going to start?
Great question, is we don't know. Is, it's been frozen, like many of the other DOT projects, I don't know, Charlie, do you have any?
Indefinitely on hold.
Yeah, indefinitely on hold, and my understanding is, as of today, I think 43 is, as of last week, 43 is now on hold, the 43 connected project.
Will those utilities be put underground, on the roundabout, on Neuse Boulevard?
I think the Neuse Boulevard, we're doing underground there.
We didn't finish that design.
You haven't, okay. Still working on the design yet at this point.
Here again, the relocation of any water, how's that, you know, preliminary on that?
We're paying for that, Jordan.
We'll do the, the roundabout, we'll do in-house.
We're doing in-house work.
Oh, well, should we get reimbursement?
I think it'll be on our dollar.
Well, you guys got any estimates on that yet?
No.
We've only got one very small roundabout relocation.
Well, great. Good news, okay.
Mark, is it the roundabout down by Taco Bell? Is that what you're speaking of?
Certainly, yes.
Board have questions?
If not, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Neuse Boulevard, and Roundabout.
Second. Motion and second is a discussion. Seeing number seven, roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Dest?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries out number sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixteen, our final piece of business tonight is a resolution approving the addition of streetlights on Phillips Avenue. Philip Williams, a resident of Phillips Avenue, requested additional street lighting in the area of thirteen ten Phillips Avenue. The Department of Public Utilities evaluated that area and determined that the current lighting does not meet the city's light standard. The installation of two lights will cost one thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cent, and the monthly utility charge for the service will be sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cent. There's a memo that's included in your packet, and I do believe this is in Mr. Kenzie's report.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting a resolution approving the add-on of streetlight on Phillips Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. CNN on several calls starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Let's go to appointments. Alderman Odom?
None tonight.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kenzie?
None.
Alderman Astor?
None, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
Alderman Bingle?
None, sir.
Okay. Attorney's report? City manager's report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Mr. Stevens, I would like you to do two things under city manager's report. I'd like for you to give us an update on the Stanley White and Mr. Foster's here, or if you have any updates you want to give us on?
Sure, Stanley White. Probably best just to let Foster do that, because I've kind of turned it over to him. I know we have had our Stanley White Recreation Advisory Committee meet on, I think they've met twice now, one got canceled, but...
That's correct. We've met twice.
They've made some very significant progress. I think our consultants were at our last meeting giving an update. So I'll turn it over to Foster to give you some details.
So the last meeting was this past Tuesday night here in the council chambers, and the consultants from CPL Architecture came in and they engaged the committee members, really received a lot of the input from the committee on what the process was going to be for the public input. And so our very first thing for public input is coming up, this coming Monday at the Omega Center. It's a drop-in style meeting where we're encouraging everyone to come, just spend five minutes, spend thirty minutes, spend an hour, going through a variety of exercises to give your input to see what the next Stanley White Recreation Center can look at, look like. And so this will be a very engaging time. We encourage everyone to come, and it should be, it should be a lot of fun. And we're looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say. So that's, that's the biggest part that's coming up with that.
Okay, and any questions, anything about that? You got something?
No. With regards to any other items, you know, it's kind of, at this point, we updated the board last time on where we are with the process. There's a FEMA requirement for us to do an environmental assessment. There's lots of different aspects of that. Foster's been working to get process from our consultant CP and Al to do that. So once we get that, we'll probably ask them to go ahead and move forward with that so that we can continue to move forward with Stanley White Recreation Center approvals with FEMA.
And that's probably on the six to nine month type of a process?
I would, I would say at least six. Foster probably give you a better idea. I know that FEMA wants to be involved in it. They want to be involved and understand all of the public engagement that we're doing to allow the public to speak, but I know you spoke with them further.
That's right. So FEMA is going to be involved every step of the way with the environmental assessment. And the good thing about the public input part that we're doing, a lot of what we're doing with this first part with our current consultants, it goes toward that environmental assessment. So we only anticipate, right now, our public input is supposed to go through the end of, the end of October. So we've got several public input sessions that will be scheduled throughout that time. Then we'll start doing the planning for what will actually be in the building. That will take about a month. Soon as that ends, which we anticipate that being in January, the end of January, we anticipate a few more months with the environmental assessment, then we turn it over to FEMA, and we should have a few more months after that to get, whether it's approval or denial. So by, by late spring, I anticipate hearing something. Better timeframe than we were anticipating originally.
Foster, how are you advertising these meetings with the public?
We've sent press releases out to all of the media. We've actually had several media contact us for, for short interviews. It's also been in the, I believe it's the Compass. There's a full-page ad in the Compass. Social media, website, yes. And we've also sent information out. Our committee members have done a really good job of forwarding that information to churches and things like that as well. We've also got signs up around the Duffy Field community reminding folks that the meeting is coming up.
Good. Thank you.
And the other thing was update on our drainage and the engineering end of it, and then the actual improvement end of it.
I don't, I don't really think there's a significant amount to, to, there's a change from where we were last meeting. I know Danny's here, George Charles is here as well. Matt had a minor surgery, so he's not with us tonight. But I don't really think there's a tremendous change. I know that we were working through the final, I guess, several basins and finalizing some of the permanent work measures. I think, is that where you are, Danny, with permanent work measures at this point? So finalizing some of those. And then from there, those will be submitted to FEMA, FEMA accepted at that point based on the scope of the work. And then eventually, at some point, we get to send those out for bid and receive those bids. I don't, George, we haven't got the bids back on the two that we've already sent out, have we?
No, we have the first bid tomorrow, and the first one after that, the second one after that.
So pre-bids tomorrow, and we'll go from there on those.
Well, Mr. Meadows is not here tonight, but Mr. Meadows is. And anything we can do to speed up whatever's going on, or moderate, Alderwoman Harris is worn with that retention plan over there. You're still getting a lot of complaints about that.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, you and I met, and we maybe got some of the things straightened out, but you're still having folks watering all this in the garage over there?
Yeah, especially when it rains very hard.
And so if that's a blockage somewhere, or whatever's going on, that would be a real... I know that the folks over at her board would really appreciate that.
Mr. Charles will convey that to Avery and our stormwater group, and I'm sure he and Avery will probably try to track that down, see where that problem's at.
I was going to mention this in new business, but because it might involve the board giving you some direction. You know, I think we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks in fiscal twenty twenty-one. And it just, to me, wow, we're in a pandemic and there's not as much construction. When this is over, I think the economy's going to really go, come roaring back. And, you know, if we have two hundred thousand dollars that we can budget for sidewalks, and we have workforce development, and a lot of other things happening around town, I certainly would like to see the board consider giving directions to staff to, right now, be doing the sidewalks rather than waiting until, there's no reason to be waiting until later June of next year. So I would encourage the board, if they so choose, to give you that type of direction to see. I know in some years we've done fifty thousand, but two hundred thousand is, you know, we need, we need to make it happen. The other thing is on your, you've got some estimates on modular, a modular bathroom. And that's, again, something that the board seeks to give you some direction on. I know you have those bids in, and it's a matter of whether or not we think that the city has enough utility for that improvement, for all the different things that we have planned in the future.
I think we've got, the bids that we received range anywhere from about forty to sixty-five grand, is that right, Foster? On the, depending on how many stalls you have essentially on a trailer for the, the porta-johns on a, I guess porta-johns on a trailer, mobile bathrooms. And with that being said, what I also did is had Foster check into what our expense has been for the city's porta-johns over the last, how many years was that? Three years, last three years, we've, we've spent about fifteen grand on porta-john rentals. Now, granted, some of those are, are used on various locations and various projects and stuff like that. But, you know, the, this trailer could be used. It may, it may work for some of those things. It may not work for some of those things. And, and that necessarily, that doesn't necessarily encompass just events of the fourteen thousand. That's probably all of our porta-johns based on the vendors that we use, or vendors that we use. So about fifteen, fourteen grand that we've spent on porta-johns the last three years.
Okay, so we've got a new business, starting with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do, sir. I'm quite sure a lot of you are aware, those of you that are out on social media, Facebook, whatever, are aware of the problem that has arisen in the community with a particular individual that has been appointed to the Housing Authority Board. I have received phone calls from my, some of my constituents, and I have received phone calls from people within other, that's not even within my ward. And they wanted me to address it. And I had to make those individuals aware that I do not sit on the Housing Authority Board, okay? But I am a member of Board of Alderman, and we do have to protect all citizens of this city, no matter where they live within our city. They're still our citizens. And they were saying that this member of the Board, of the Housing Authority Board needs to resign. Again, I told them I do not serve on the Housing Authority Board. I do not appoint individuals to the Housing Authority Board. That is a matter that they will have to address with Mayor Outlaw, and that's the way I have left it. And at this point, I'm a little hesitant about even speaking more on the matter because I don't have facts. And I don't open my mouth and try to insert my foot when I don't have facts. But I did, because they was bombarding me with videos, sending them to me. So I did go out and look at some of, listen to some of these videos, and I'm a little alarmed with some of it. And I'm just going to leave it like that. I'm a little alarmed with some of it. But again, I think that we, as a board, we have the responsibility to protect all citizens of the city. And it is our, it is left up to us as board members, because we're the ones that govern the city. We protect the city. We handle all affairs for the city, and within those affairs, we need to treat each individual with dignity and respect. And that's all I have to say about it, because they wanted me to address it with the board, and I said I would so, because I don't have... I'm not going to not address this to the board, because I do take some interest in what has been said. So I'm going to leave it like that.
Very well. Anything else?
That's it for me tonight.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes. I'd like to speak with Mr. Charlie about the AMI system, to share with us where we are with that, have we completed it, and where we headed with it, and what's, where we at with that there?
Great, thank you.
If you don't mind, please.
We have about all but two hundred electric meters installed on the AMI system and operating functionally, performing as, as designed. Those last two hundred are difficult to reach in the fact that they need to be coordinated with electrical contractors and property owners, and they're not plug-and-play. So those are taking us a little bit longer to get installed. I hope to have those done by the end of the year. Water-wise, has been lagging behind the electric meters. We are constantly trying to get a vendor that supplies our nodes, the equipment for our water AMI meters, to expedite the parts that we need. So we're being delayed at times by our water meter vendor. We have all but about two hundred of those water meters installed, so we're lacking about two hundred. Additionally, we'll have, when this is all said and done, we'll have about three hundred water meters in the total system that will still need to be manually read. They're hard to reach. They're water services only. We can't reach them with our AMI network connectivity unless new technology is developed in the next few years. So we always have about three hundred of those, or three thousand of those, that we will not be able to read man, or read through the AMI system.
So you were seeing those, those nodes? Is that what you call them?
They're called a node.
Is that something that reads that?
It, yes, it communicates...
And sends a signal back?
Sends the reading back from the meter to the AMI brains of the system.
Okay. Because we spent a whole lot of money on that system, and I thought it was pretty much already completed. And how, can you explain how effective that system is in saving money? And how do you judge the, the amount of electricity is used at an individual's home?
It's, it's much more quantitative than the old methods of mechanical dials. Our data is much more granular. We can analyze customers' usage down to the fifteen-minute interval, see when their patterns are, help them troubleshoot problems. It's, I think it was a very wise decision by this board to proceed with AMI. It's where the future is going. It helps us in outage management. It helps us in accurate billing. It helps us on utility analytics and understanding what our load profiles are and matching up those against our purchase power costs. There's a lot to it besides just reading a meter. And as we've gotten the system built out, now we're just starting to get into the analytics of it and trying to use those benefits that we received with the AMI system beyond just a meter read. We do remote disconnects when they're necessary. We don't have to roll trucks to every single location. We don't have those a hundred percent deployed, but there are obviously savings there as well.
And do we still have people out in the field reading meters?
Yes, we do primarily the water meters, because there's still a number of those that are manually read and haven't been converted to AMI. And we'll always have some, some physical presence on the meters just to do visual inspections from time to time. And there are problems arise if we lose connectivity with the meter and we have to go wake it up, or we didn't get a read. In a timely manner, we'll send somebody out there to take a look at the meter visually and see what's going on. Maybe a device needs to be replaced, or the system needs to be woke up, so to speak.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I have one other question. I have something for the chief on National Night Out. Since we have that epidemic that's going on, things are a little different this year for the National Night Out. What are you looking to do different this year? I've explained a little bit, but I wanted to ask you, you know, about what's going to take place this year, and is it any future plans for the next year National Night Out?
National Out has been moved from the first Tuesday in August to the first Tuesday in October. As far as we know, there still could be a chance that the national organization councils the whole program. Right now, we're trying to decide whether it's the best way to proceed here in the city of New Bern. We certainly want to proceed in the direction where we don't draw large gatherings. So we're polling different communities in there. I'm pretty sure we polled your communities about some ideas. And one of the ideas that we came up with was some type of sign that shows that neighbors are part of a watch group or part of a keep criminals out of our community group. So with some type of wind wheel, spin wheel, rhythm. And that's just one object that we're looking, one option that we're looking at, excuse me. But we haven't really firmed it up yet. Still trying to figure out how to do it and what's the best way that we can do it safely.
On the, the spin wheel, who's going to bear that cost?
We would have to have the community bear it unless the board appropriates more money, because we spent all our money, assuming that the National Out was going to occur the way it normally does. We used the money to buy banners, which we will still give community banners, T-shirts for the coordinators, and also trinkets, coloring books, and things of that for the kids, which we all purchased.
Do you think that you need to allot more money for future events?
Assuming that National Night Out occurs as it has in the past, what we budget for is sufficient. But given pandemics and unusual things, we might need additional funds, but that was hard to predict back when we did the budget.
Okay. Well, thank you so very much.
And I think ultimately, you know, that's, the National Night Out can be whatever the, the board wants it to be. I mean, if the board wants it to be a bigger event or us to spend more money, then obviously the board can allocate that, those funds. But that's really a board decision. It's really meant to be more of a community event where the community comes together. They're the ones that kind of have the party or the get-together, or the pig picking, or the, you know, Sunday, Sunday kind of bring-your-own-meal kind of thing, whatever they want to do. But ultimately, it's up to the community. It's, it's an opportunity for the community to say, we're supporting the police, and we want to be a part of it as well. And that's the reason why we do the T-shirts and the banners, provide the banners for, and support them through the different kinds of coloring books for the kids, whatever it may be.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Nope. The only thing I'd like to say is, George, thank you very much for helping us with the old airport road. And also, we'd like to mention that I hope Matt is doing well. He is home recovering from some surgery, and I wish him well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Alderman here?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to piggyback off of what Alderman Best said. But, so, long story, super short. We're elected to represent our specific ward, so obviously, if there's anything going on in my ward, it's my duty to bring it to you guys, whether it's positive or negative. So I don't represent Ward One, so I wouldn't have known of any appointment until it was brought to my attention, because honestly, I don't look at the emails, because I expect Alderman Bingle to bring to the board any concerns or anything that's going on with the Housing Authority. I know that the Housing Authority appointments are solely your responsibility, and you have that power. But I do think moving forward, it should be something that could, could be discussed with the rest of the board, because I'm actually disgusted and disappointed that you thought it was okay to appoint this individual to the board, knowing that for two years, this person has caused a lot of issues. And as the mayor, you represent all demographic in the city of New Bern. That's white, black, poor, rich, Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, gay, straight, transgender. And this individual has said twice within most recent times that drag queens are pedophiles, and I think that's not appropriate or conducive for someone that sits as an appointed official or appointed member of a board. I've had complaints that he is making it known that Trent Court is going to be torn down, all of it. And the individuals, preferably the African-Americans, are worried that they're going to be evicted and have nowhere to go. Also, it's been stated that the interim director, Arlene, was told by him that she was a failure and a disappointment in the open meeting. And from what I've heard, no one stood up for her. And I feel like as the mayor, it's your responsibility to make sure that you do your due diligence in regards to the people that you appoint to this board, especially when they represent something outside of who they are and you're appointing them to the Housing Authority Board, which represents low-income marginalized communities. And there's also the LGBTQ that live in that community. So I am here tonight for a lot of other people, you know, asking that you reconsider that appointment or ask for his resignation because it's not conducive for him to sit on the board. He may be able to ask a million and one questions and that's great. Anyone can do that on the board, but you have to have a heart for what you're doing. And I don't believe that's what he has. And our citizens are important, although he is a citizen too, but this is a whole demographic of citizens. And we already deal with a lot of controversial things between the racial tension in the city of New Bern that a lot of people seem to close their eyes on. But I think it's far time, especially what's going on with our country, for us as a board to make a stand that we don't deal with bigotry or racism or people that are going to be like that to our citizens because it's not good, it's not right. And so I, you know, obviously, you know, my health issues. I didn't want to be here, but I wanted to be here to express that so you can hear me clearly, not over the phone. But it was a poor decision and, you know, I just feel like that's a lack of leadership. And the fact that I am your colleague and you know that we have these issues, you didn't even come to me and talk to me about it. When I addressed it to you, you said that three other aldermen recommended this individual. So I would love to know on record who the other three aldermen that recommended this person.
Well, I'll just speak for me. And I think that the person in question has gotten a lot of answers from me that I've not gotten. Every time I've made an appointment, I have stressed transparency, making the meetings open to the public, televising them. A lot of questions to be answered. I have a lot of concern about the future income stream of, you know, when and if new units are built or old units are demolished, et cetera. I've had concerns about the vacancy in the existing Trent Court units and in the towers. I have a lot of concern about some of the conditions and the person in question has helped to make sure that access doors that are just laying open for kids to crawl under and get hurt, lungs that have not been mowed, unhealthy conditions, you know, throughout the area that flooded. So the person in question has gotten me a lot of answers that other individuals could have got me. But, so I am at this point satisfied with the performance of the person you're concerned about. I'll be more, I'm very respectful of your comments, concerns. They concern me. I'll be more glad to meet with you and that person in question and see if we can all work together and move forward. And the ultimate goal here is for affordable housing, safer affordable housing for our citizens. That's the main goal I have. The other things I'll be glad to look into, but I'm interested in the Housing Authority members that want to move this city forward. I think the individual you're concerned about has done some very needed things to kind of interject some ideas and concerns that need to be addressed. And I'm telling you seriously about the safety conditions and the lack. Right now, there's probably 20 units of affordable housing in this city that are sitting vacant. And he's helping to get those things occupied. And I think that we should work together on this. And again, I'll be glad to meet with you and the individual, see if we can work through this.
Well, obviously, you know that's not going to have him there. I think it's great that he was able to accomplish that. But again, like we stated, the appointments for the board is solely your responsibility. So if you weren't getting what you want, then that's a reflection on yourself. In regards to that, I feel like you're putting politics over people because although all of those things are gradually moving, what about the mental health of the individuals that live in that community that are now being tortured, they feel by an individual that has a vendetta and once again, does not have a heart for low-income marginalized communities? You're not the only one on the board that wants affordable housing. But we all know there's a lot of people, preferably the black community, that feels that they are being gentrified, moved out of that community because a few people on the board would like to dismantle the Housing Authority and put it under the redevelopment or with the city because it is a cash cow, as it has been stated. And we know that it's waterfront property and we want to be able to bulk it together and sell it to the highest bidder. But at the end of the day, there's individuals that live in that community right now that don't feel happy, they're not, they're not safe, they don't feel safe of regards if they're going to have a roof over their head. It is a pandemic and the Housing Authority meetings are not conducive to regular working individual, middle-class people at 4:30, especially during what's going on. They don't have a call-in number because I tried to call in. I know they might have had some Zooms that I was unaware of. But, I mean, he was appointed seven months ago. I understand that. Like I said, it's not my ward for me to really delve into that because I respect Alderman Bingo. That's her ward, just as if anything that's going on in mine, I'm going to present it to you. So I'm not worried about, you know, the fact that he's been on the board for that long. It's the fact that I know about it now. We know the type of individual that this person is. We've given you evidence and documentation from many community members. And the fact that he's made these comments and are making people feel this way and you're comfortable with him being on the board because he answered and got a few questions done. You have an alderman that represents that board and you also represent that board holistically. So if there's issues, you need to have a meeting with the rest of the board to see why they're not getting things done. But for her, for him to, you know, treat her how she was during open meeting and tell her that she's a failure and that she can quit, that's the type of representation that you want on that board? A whole maintenance department quit? There's a pandemic going on. So it's more to the story than, you know, what you're portraying it to be. I'm just saying, as a colleague and I thought we had respect for each other. You would have come to me seven months ago when it was a thought process that you wanted to put this individual on the board because you know that there's been two years of ongoing issues. That's all I have to say.
Okay, and I'll be glad to work with you at any time with that individual or just with any other group or any other Housing Authority members. Actually, I think part of my comments the other night, which, or the other day when I met with them, that were not able to be on any type of a public medium was that I want, I'm there to be a partner with them. I'm not there as part of taking over the Housing Authority. The whole purpose of wanting there to meet with them is to assure them that whatever resources are available with this city, that we can assist them for the ultimate goal of safe affordable housing. That's the ultimate goal. A lot of these other things, again, respect you and I respect your comments. And I will work with you on these differences that we obviously have in appointments. And again, as at present time, the mayor makes all appointments. So anytime any individuals give me any input on future appointments, I'm more glad to listen to you. I don't recall any specific individual on this board that has come to me and said, we need this type of person on the board. Right now, I thought it was very important to have a school principal on the board. So a school principal is appointed because of the school. I thought it was important to have somebody that knew a lot about police and security. We have a former retired captain. So each time I've made an appointment, I try to put people on the board that represent particular concerns within New Bern. We have a resident member. And if you technically look into that, that resident member was supposed to rotate from the towers to the Trent Court, to the Craven Terrace. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on there. And the main thing is that we're talking about housing. We're talking about affordable housing right now. I want to put all the other things aside and work towards safer affordable housing for our citizens, and I want you to join with me in that. And if there's give and take, I will be the one to give. But let's don't just close the door on this discussion. Let's have a conversation.
On affordable housing or the appointment to the Housing Authority?
Anything you want to.
We talked about affordable housing. I've brought many things to the board about affordable housing, you know. But again, like I said, the appointment, for me, I don't feel like you can put it aside and just sweep it under the rug because this is a person that sits on the board. I would love to know the qualifications that allow him to be on this board, how he, you know, you have a police officer, a teacher. But you can send it in an email if you'd like, if you want to discuss it.
I certainly will. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you just said, that you were willing to meet, to resolve some of these issues that is going on. I received some phone calls. I wasn't going to say anything tonight about it until it was brought up. And you said you were willing to talk with people. And if that's going to be so, I appreciate you doing that to find out, to resolve some of those issues that is lingering, that the folks are seeing that is going on. I'm not there, I just heard the phone calls came in to me as well. And when you addressed it tonight, saying that you were willing to meet with them to address the issue, I appreciate you doing that.
Yes, sir. If you'd like to.
Alderman Harris, I guess I would like to just address a couple of things too because I attend every meeting. I'm at all the meetings, I do go. I'm very meticulous about my notes. And you and I have shared many conversations on my dissatisfaction with the Housing Authority for a while now. Everything from the minute the hurricane hit and we had almost disaster and losing people's lives there, to the aftermath of that and the non-reactionary things they should have been doing, they didn't do. I continue to be dissatisfied with what I'm seeing at the meetings. I've discussed that. And yes, I've discussed the potential of bringing it up under the Housing Authority because it's just these people that live in, these citizens of ours that live in Trent Court and in the towers deserve our very best. And I feel they're not getting it because we don't have a hand on it. The board members run it. We don't own the property. We don't own Trent Court. So that's not our final decision anyway. We don't own New Bern Towers. We really don't, we aren't able to do anything. You see the frustration you have as an alderman of the ward that represents Craven Terrace. They have issues and problems that we don't have any result or any ability to change the results. So I'd be happy to meet with you, with Alderman Best. I will tell you, I've not received one phone call and I'm at every meeting. And no one has called to ask me what actually happened at these meetings or whatever. But some of the things that you're mentioning about the director and everything, I'd be happy to rebut. And I'd be happy, unfortunately, and for the life of me, I called after we had a discussion last week and asked for the Zoom recording of the meeting because we were on Zoom and I thought they recorded those. I would think that would be.
This is the July meeting?
This was last month's, yes, ma'am. And because that was the meeting, I think, where things kind of got out of hand. But I thought it was more out of hand on the director's side than on the member's side based on what I witnessed. And I was part of the call. You know, I come loaded with questions every time because I have concerns. I have concerns that there's 28 empty units when people need housing. I'm concerned that they don't still have a plan for the demolition of the damaged properties, which are 12 buildings. They're waiting, waiting, they haven't gotten through their money. I just have concerns. There's been a lack of leadership on many, many levels there. But again, I can't do anything because I can attend the meetings, I represent those citizens. I was concerned that they were meeting via Zoom for months and citizens couldn't have a voice. We had a gentleman that was concerned about fans in the hallway. It was hot, the fans had not been fixed. And he was trying to speak to it over the phone and they couldn't understand him. And, you know, that's not right. So the reason they were at the Omega Center last month is because I have begged and pleaded, it's in the minutes. Every meeting, I ask, will they please go to a public venue so that the citizens can be there? And I finally got them to the Omega Center, but nothing's recorded. That concerns me as well. There's not even a voice recorder to go back to. So again, I think there's some things they can do. I'm going to continue to attend the meetings because I am concerned about the citizens that live there, what their needs are. I want them to have clean, affordable, more modern places to live in because it's difficult.
Are you, so are you able to answer the question that's on a lot of our minds within the community in regards to what happened during Florence? When money was raised for tiny houses and they used the pain of what happened in that community and there was no resolve, there's no tiny houses?
Are you in regards, are you in regards to the MasterCard money?
Right, the MasterCard money.
Okay, so I'm happy to put you in touch with the president of that organization, who will be glad to answer those questions.
Because I asked Swiss Bear for the information and they didn't have it.
Okay, I'm happy to give you that number. You can talk one-on-one and they'll tell you exactly why that money was donated. And it was not because of pictures or anything else. They will be glad to document that for you.
But it was told to, even though that's the paperwork, the word and the stuff that was put out was based on the fact that there was going to be some tiny homes and we're going to be able to do so much to help the community. If they're still struggling, how does that money help the community?
Again, where, has there been any requests for any of it?
For requests for the money?
Sure. Has someone come through with building losses?
I've heard people ask for requests. I know that Habitat has, but I guess the deal didn't work out.
Okay, so there's confusion among that.
Please clarify.
Well, so the confusion with the Habitat was that Habitat came before redevelopment commission. It was not Swiss Bear. Okay, so that's where, they came before redevelopment and they were going to work on a plan where Habitat would rehab the houses, but redevelopment would, I guess, own them and then lease them out. And that was a program, they did not want to be involved. It was not Swiss Bear. So there was misinformation there. So you can clarify that. I know Deirdre was here, but you can clarify that. I'm happy to document and clarify any of this stuff. Again, pick up the phone. Nobody seems to want to pick up the phone.
I have, I've contacted.
But you haven't contacted them.
But I've contacted Swiss Bear because Swiss Bear.
Well, I'm happy to be that person in the middle there and I'm happy to get you whatever you need. Again, we work as colleagues, happy to do that.
And I know that we work as colleagues. And being a colleague, I'm trying to understand how you were okay with that appointment.
Well, you know, I did have concern, hey, look, I was, I've been, you know, part of that band scene as well. I've been attacked and everything. So I've been there, done that. But I'll be honest with you, I wanted to hold my judgment back to actions speak louder than words sometimes to me and I had to see the actions. And I will tell you, the questions that were asked were the questions that needed to be asked.
But what about the citizens that live in Trent Court, though? You represent them, so if they fear that they're going to be kicked out or victim.
I have never heard that. Now, he may have personally.
Well, they'll be here on September 8th.
He may have personally told them that or something. I was not witness that. In the meetings, I have never heard that said in a meeting.
So you have to witness it, but if someone gets up there and tells you what they think?
That's fine, but again, if they're my citizen, I would appreciate a phone call.
But you know that your relationship with that community is kind of.
I don't, and I don't know why because I'm responsive. I do whatever's asked of me. I try to, you know, make good decisions based on what the citizens need. So that's a personal problem, I would know.
I understand. I just know that they reach out to me and.
Well, people reach out to people who they're comfortable with.
Right.
Just like citizens, instead of calling the city manager for an issue, they'll call you because they're comfortable with you. So I get that and I understand that. Doesn't mean I'm not willing. There's people in your ward who reach out to me because they don't know you. So I say, yes, what's the problem? And then I call you and we handle it. So that, I'm not concerned about that. I want to just help and resolve situations, but people, you have to, you know, can't fix something if I don't have the spark. And I'm willing to talk to anybody anytime.
Alderman Bingo.
Yes.
I would like to have a copy of that Zoom meeting, July, when you receive it.
Well, there's no, there's no recording. I did call and ask and was told that Wardens Smith told them they did not have to record.
For the July meeting?
Yes, none of their meetings have been recorded.
Not even to Zoom?
Not, not to Zoom, nothing. So I have, believe me, I've gone back through all of that. They were advised that they did not have to and only written minutes are what's available for the meeting.
Wardens Smith is the attorney.
The attorneys, yes.
I'm looking for more affordable units, safer units that we already have and more transparency. And obviously, I'm looking for televised meetings, the ability for the public. A lot of what we were discussing in the last 20 minutes, if we had those recorded meetings, we'd all just sit down, look at them and then go from there. But it's, I wouldn't call it esoteric, but it's just, there's nothing there to go on.
We have some recordings and some evidence of you and like in regards to the type of person that you have on the Housing Authority. I can email it to you.
Well, Mayor, I thought that it was brought to our attention once before that to have to actually house the Housing Authority Board member meetings here. So I don't know what happened with that.
What happened was, I was told, and I asked that, that because of the limitations of this building, because there's elderly citizens having to come upstairs, they felt it was not conducive.
But we have a lifter.
Agreed. Agreed. You heard me at the last meeting. You were sitting there when we went, I don't know if you came in that time. I asked again, every meeting, I asked them to please move it to a place. So what happened was, we offered development services because we felt this, they felt this building was hard to get into, so I said, can you meet at Development Services? And again, that was not satisfactory to the board, and we came up with the Omega Center. So again, I will continue to try. I believe it does need to be open, accessible, and broadcast. It should be broadcast like our other meetings are so citizens that are not able to come out and view these meetings.
Mr. Scott, I just have a question. Someone emailed me and wanted to know how the Housing Authority operates in regards to if someone is appointed and maybe things aren't going properly, how does it work? Does that actual Housing Authority Board need to vote them off, or does the mayor have the power to remove them from the board?
It would be a hearing. The mayor could, could file a charge, and then we would have a public hearing where that person would defend themselves, have lawyers. It'd be like a little miniature trial to decide if they should be fired or not.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Any other news, Mr. Harris?
I did, I had one item, just because I need to bring this to the attention of the board. Several months ago, during the beginnings of the shutdown, we suspended parking in downtown. I came back to this board, I guess it was the end of May sometime, I looked at my notes today, and we talked about reinstating it. Hadn't, you said you would prefer if I would go back to the Downtown Business Association and have them send a letter. When I went back, they said they would prefer to wait till Phase Three. Well, we're at the point where Phase Three could go on months. We're not sure about that, so I, there is a downtown meeting Thursday evening, and I would like the feel of the board, if they are amenable, and could we go back to enforced two-hour parking September 14th, which would be that Monday, the following Monday after Labor Day, because Labor Day is the 8th. But I want to make sure before I offer that, that this board would be amenable because we'd have to come back to the board to give direction. Anybody, yea, nay?
I'm nay. I think we're still in the pandemic until we find out what's going on. We should suspend it.
Okay.
Because it's allowing people to, you know, you guys getting a lot of people coming downtown and purchases.
Yeah, it's been, Mark made the mention to me today that it's, you know, part of that. I would take Saturdays, now, we don't have enforced parking, but Saturdays seem to almost be, you know, with a lot of people walking around during the week, still kind of a little bit slow. The other issue would be if we, we want to continue to suspend two-hour parking, we need to have a formal vote to do so, but we also need to include the warning because right now, if you're past two hours, what they're doing right now is the parking enforcers are tagging cars, and if they're more than two hours, they just get a warning ticket. They don't get a official parking ticket, they get a warning ticket. We're going to suspend it, then let's suspend all of it. I think it's kind of confusing to give somebody a warning ticket if we're not doing two-hour parking, so I just, I need some direction.
Can we counter it to the September 22nd meeting because the governor is supposed to speak on the 11th?
We could, we could do, we could do whatever would be best, but I just, so I wanted to bring it before the board to get some direction so I can go back to downtown and tell them how they feel. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I mean, tell us what the Downtown Business can be.
Yeah, I'll do that. You know what, I'll bring it back to the meeting on the 8th, and then we can go from there and just decide and say, hey, push this off. So I'll just bring something back based on our conversation on that night. Is that okay? All right, thank you, that's all.
Okay. Do we need a closed session tonight? Is there any other business to come forward, even more volatile at this time?
Yes, Mayor, will you meet with Alderman Harris and whomever else I'd like to meet as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other business to come forward at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And second to adjourn. All parties say aye.
Aye.